Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the software that we have to meet together as councils this day and grateful for the responsibilities that we have been given and pray that we'll be able to have the capacity to make the right decisions and to listen, to address the concerns of the citizens. We're grateful for the citizens of this community and the surrounding area. And we pray that the businesses and residents of this community and the county and the water reserve will prosper and that we'll be able to have good relations one with another. That's really great to be with this name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you, Counselor. We are going to call the meeting to order for this day, the fourth, no, we're not the Fourth of September, we're the-
Today, the 11th.
We're the 11th of September. And we welcome the media. We have representative for the owner of the Temple Star, and that's welcome to you.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. And we have Corey McCalister here for Channel 32, so welcome both of you. All right, we're going to look at additions and adoption of agenda.
Small addition.
Do you have an addition?
It's a small one. I'd like Council to decide what they want to do about the official unveiling or official whatever of the senator, a date for that, or-
Okay. Do you want to put it, where would you like to put it?
Probably other business, I guess.
Other business?
Right after the franchise fee.
Okay, we'll put it on the C. There is an addition from administration under 7B, Carston County Peace Officer Agreement. You may want to put that in your agenda. And 7C would be the unveiling of the new senator.
What are you calling that 7B again?
Carston County Peace Officer-
Captain?
County-
County.
Police Officer Agreement.
Agreement, okay. I better turn off my bell tones.
It's okay. It's my accent, Counselor.
I'm not gonna go there.
We're gonna reach across and smash you in the belt.
All right. The delegation will be there at 6 o'clock, so we will conduct all our items of business at this point. So we need to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda with the additions.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. So let's go to item 5, Adoption of Minutes of the August 14 Council. Counselor Brown?
I'm in commotion to adopt the minutes of the August 14, 2018.
Thank you. Any question regarding those minutes, the content of it?
I've got a date of August 13, 2018. Is that a typographical error?
Yeah, but on the actual, on the actual minutes, it says August 13.
If you call up the actual minutes, it says reading held August 13, 2018.
It's corrected in the print. It's corrected, thank you. All right, well done. All in favor? Thank you very much. Yeah, because I got it correctly here. All right, 6, Bylaw and Policy. Draft bylaw 1672. Welcome, Counselor. The Truth and Reconciliation Committee. So are there anything there that you have a problem with?
First reading of bylaw 1672.
Okay, we have first reading of bylaw 1672. All in favor? Thank you. We can leave as a second reading and third reading for another meeting. We don't need to rush. 6B, the draft Smoking and Cannabis Control bylaws. As you will see in your packet, you have two different versions of a cannabis, of smoking and cannabis bylaw. Jeff is going to address the differences. One has been done according to the direction we gave administration last meeting. And the other one has been done by our peace officer to try to see if we can combine the two items. Jeff will address the pros and cons of doing so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be frank, Counsel. I've reviewed this again the last couple of days, and I'm not sure that, I think that this, this Smoking and Cannabis Control bylaw, the larger one, may be a little, just a bit half-baked at the moment. Maybe a pun intended there, by the way. I never thought about that, but yeah, I did think about that. Pun intended. But let me give a little preamble and what we were thinking at the time. From, when I met with Brad after last council and we were talking about, we want to look at this prohibition on public consumption of cannabis. We want to look at, there was a couple of things Council specifically wanted to address was the nuisance and public prohibition. And so he was saying ideally, when you have these types of related bylaws, if they're all together in one, from an enforcement point of view, it's a little easier because he doesn't have to remember and have to cite so many different bylaws. If we know it's under the smoking bylaw, it's under the smoking bylaw. And he had something kind of half-drafted that we looked at and tried to tidy up real quick. However, my feeling right now is when you look at some of the things proposed, I don't have any problem with it, but I'm not sure if right now we want to take them on. As an example, in the larger Smoking and Cannabis Control bylaw, it includes things like no one shall possess a lit cigarette, cigar pipe, et cetera, within the downtown central business corps. So that may be somewhere we want to get to. The question is politically, do you want to bite that off right now? We need to have some discussion about that and maybe some public consultation. It talks a lot about businesses having to designate a smoking area that's approved by the town and where that will be if they are in the downtown corps. And then it has a much more aggressive penalty listing on it than the previous, or current, I should say, smoking bylaw has. So to back up just a half a step, this cannabis control bylaw that you have in there is the one we just drafted, which simply deals with two things. Cannabis cannot be consumed in a public place. And when there is nuisance coming from cannabis, here's the criteria we're going to look at to try and evaluate it. That's all this contains. And that was kind of the stopgap, for lack of a better term, that we talked about last meeting. And so we use the, both RMRF recommendations and the Okotoks bylaw to put this together. So that was the simple direction that we had from Council last time. Then I brought this to show that there may be a point that we want to really take a good hard look at all sections of the smoking bylaw. And we want to take a good hard look at what the demand of the community is with respect to public consumption of smoking, either tobacco or cannabis. But what I don't know, Counsel, and why I'm a little, I'm not nervous, but maybe it's a little preemptive, is do you want to have discussion on public consumption of tobacco right now, or should we put this in place? Pick a time, maybe in the winter, to start looking at this. And once, if we go through something in the smoking bylaw generally, we can simply just rescind the cannabis one at the same time. But I would feel strongly, we need something in place for October 17. I don't want to delay any, I don't want to have nothing, because we wanted a few months to debate the more robust bylaw.
So, Counselors, your impression?
I like the idea of just having the cannabis control bylaw to start with, and then let's have further, maybe even some input about the general tobacco and cannabis.
All right. How many would feel the same way?
I was supportive for, for this reason. I was out walking last night, and I don't know how this is going to play out, but the guy walking by me was smoking dope. I don't know if he considered it a public place, or is it going to be treated like alcohol, in which case he shouldn't be drinking on the street, so. Because he, like, walked right by me having a joint, so.
Right.
I prefer a standalone cannabis bylaw, because of the intricacies involved in all the different, all the different areas that we're going to be concerned about.
Counselor Brown?
Agreed.
Counselor Drew?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think we need to have this in place before the government comes out with the legalization. And the other reason is, is that over the years, I know we have a smoking bylaw in place, but I don't know how actively that bylaw has been enforced.
Correct.
Because we know people are still smoking in public places. And if we were to all of a sudden slap them with the same thing as we do with the cannabis, then there's going to be a real uproar. And I think we need to ease our way into that one. But the cannabis one, people are expecting that we're going to come out strong, especially in this community. And we need to.
All right. I am of the same opinion. And I can tell you that the media at large are rather interested in what we're going to do in this community. We have received quite a bit of interest from the media.
Yeah, I've been feeling a lot of calls.
And I gently encourage that to Jeff.
She used to take them, and now they all come.
You haven't got 35 interviews coming up yet?
Yeah, we have had a few requests.
Yeah. Okay, well, I appreciate that feedback, Counsel. And I apologize, I didn't want to bring it prematurely, but I do think we need to enter back into some of this discussion. I agree with Counsel Barnes that if we, we need to have a long discussion on the tobacco bylaw about what's the level of enforcement.
Yeah, exactly.
Because that will have political ramifications for you. So maybe in November, December, we'll bring that back up. We can start to have some discussion about perhaps a public engagement piece and some feedback on that, and develop that a little more thoroughly.
That's not very far away.
Yeah. Counselor Bangman?
Jeff, I, I want a standalone bylaw myself. The reason why is because I look at the communities and the cities that have their bylaws together. And right now, they're questioning, have they done the right thing? Because, you know, they're debating back and forth in council. What about this? What about that? So forth. And does it apply to this? Does it apply to that? So I strongly agree, we need a standalone bylaw.
1673 is there for you to give whatever amount of readings you see fit?
Yeah. And I did notice with the enforcement, because I difficulty enforcing the tobacco bylaw. If they're long together, they wonder if they will be able to enforce the other.
So are we ready to move forward on first reading then?
Well-
No, it's not yet.
We could do first reading and bring the other one later on at the next meeting. Counselor Barnes?
I'm prepared to make motion to, to approve first reading on bylaw 1673, the cannabis control bylaw.
Okay, so that's good this way. All in favor? Thank you. I didn't ask for questions because I think we had enough. All right. Here you have, under 6C, a draft amendment for bylaw 1583B, the FCSS bylaw. And that is an interesting request, because if you remember, FCSS takes excuse from us. It's a committee that is under council. Therefore, Council need to make the amendments.
I just wondered, are we not going to discuss the second part of that draft or the map that was associated with it, or is that something we're gonna-
That'll come down in 1647C.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. So the changes are changes in governance. And Counselor Brown, that is your department, so if you want to speak to those changes, or we can simply go ahead. It's very slight changes that are requested. Do you want to speak to those changes?
We talked about it at the last meeting, I think.
I really think we can go ahead. It's really small governance issues, nothing of importance.
Well, I, as I was reading it, looking at what is, what constitutes a quorum, do you have, how many, how many members are on the board? How many actual members are on? There's seven? Okay. So I just want to make sure on that, because I know, I know some meetings, you go to, and I know that the Startle Society had a problem with this for a while. They didn't have it outline what was going to be a quorum. So some people were saying if there was, if there was a number of people at that meeting, then whatever the majority of those people were at the meeting was constituting a quorum, but it didn't. So that's why I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, so that there is a, you know, if there's only two people show up, or three people show up, two-
I understand what you're saying. Jeff wants to say something.
I was just gonna mention for Counsel Barnes, I didn't include, my mistake, I didn't include the parent bylaw there. And it outlines specifically how many members at large, which counselors, which municipalities. It's quite specific in the parent.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor, so.
I move frustratingly, draft amendment bylaw 1583B, the FCSS bylaw.
1583?
1583B.
Okay, that one too.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's go on the 6D. Business arising from public hearings cannot be done at this point because we have not had a hearing. So we will have to kind of postpone that item. So let's go on the 7 of the business. The 7A, the Adco franchise fee. As you know, every time you have a big utility corporation that does work for the town, there is a franchise fee that is paid. And that is really an in and out item. So we haven't changed that fee, or since I've been on council, for sure, I don't think it has been changed in seven years. But if you look at other communities, we're really in the middle of the pack. So that's you get the revenues one hand and pay them on the other hand. It all comes down to the taxpayer getting that franchise fee recouped through their bill one way or the other. So if we leave it the way it is, it's just fine.
Okay. Administration's recommendation, we leave it. I agree with that. What we need to do, we need to-
Just say so.
Don't do nothing.
Just say so.
I just have a question. I'm fully in agreement. But the question is, when you say we're in the middle of the pack, where are some of the other communities? What are their franchise fee charges?
So we are at 15%. And if you go, Airdrie is at 29%. Then you go all the way down to Colvers is 10, Clarus Home is 10.
Raymond is 12.
Raymond's 12. Hills Springs 5. But then there's many of them. Tabor's 30, or 20, and then 35 on some other stuff. Vulcan's 35. So it really goes all over the map. The thing to remember, and I, not to correct, but I want to clarify what the mayor said, it's not an in and out for us, it's an in and out for Adco.
Yeah.
So they'll charge whatever we ask and give it to us.
And they'll pass it on to the customer.
Yeah, they just pass it on to the customer. It does not affect their margins.
I didn't express it properly. Thank you, Jeff, for correcting my wording. But it's really an in and out, in the sense that there is no need to be made there, except the customer pays somewhat more. All right, so we leave it this way. 7B, Carston County and County Peace Officer Agreement. Jeff needs to explain that.
First of all, thank you for letting me add it. The reason I wanted to add it is we don't meet a second meeting in September. And I wanted to get a little feedback prior to, so I could get it back to Murray at the county. What you have is, over the last few months, we've had just a couple of requests from the county for Brad to help deal with an issue in the county related to their bylaws. So for example, we had one recently where there was an RV parked on a road. And they were looking for help and trying to remedy that. So Brad and Murray were talking about, would the town entertain if we agreed on a rate that for a few hours a year, when needed, the county could contract Brad, essentially, to go and do that. So we looked into that a little bit, and we talked to the Solicitor General. The answer is yes, you can certainly do it, if you have an agreement in place, such as the one I've drafted and put in front of you. So I know I'm asking you to read it on the fly here. Murray, sorry, it wasn't in the agenda. There's a coffee. I'll just point out a couple of things. Some of it's boilerplate, so I'll skip over that. But number three is that the Carston County shall, and we can, we can discuss all of these details, by the way, shall pay the town of Carston an hourly rate of $80 per hour plus GST. That includes travel time, admin time, reporting, court appearances, and all activities associated. The rate includes his transportation, fuel, and labor. That's it. So no materials, no, none of that stuff. And then the next piece on four is that for boarding animals, we would just charge them our standard boarding fee. And if no one comes forth as an owner for something we're holding for the county after three days, it'll be the town's animal, and we'll deal with it as we see fit, is the wording I chose there.
Most of that is that we move them on to a rescue place.
Almost all of them, yeah. When it comes to dogs and cats, almost all of them go to a rescue agency. But we do have some that are diseased or have problems.
Well, I was just wondering, once this comes into play, you know, there are people here in town who are going to look at that, and they're going to say, see fit, well, you know, and, and maybe we should put in there that, that when the see fit means that if it's a healthy animal and we can move them to a rescue facility, that's what we'll do. If they're sick and diseased, well, then we have to look at it at that time. I don't know.
I agree, but I want to throw out a scenario. We've had cases where we've held animals for weeks because no agency will take them. And you have to start questioning what the humane response is at that point.
Right, yeah.
So I don't want to commit us to holding them for weeks and weeks and months. Now, we've always been lucky. In fact, Brad just started, we've had a couple of dogs for a while because they're part of an investigation with the RCMP. We now have them fostered. So we've put out with the community saying, we have two animals that we've had for a long time. We'd love to see them in someone's home. They come full out of their location. We inspect the premises. And so those two dogs now are being fostered at someone else's home, which is great. You know, it gets them out of the pound and gets them to a more appropriate location.
Counselor, oh, Counselor Drew had his head up first.
Yeah, I just was curious about how many incidents a year would he be responding to? Will that take away from the coverage of our town? And if it does, how are we going to backfill that so that we ensure that, I don't know if that's in the plan, but I just-
So it's a, it's a great question, and one I anticipate. I, right now, I'm honestly anticipating we're talking, it might be a couple dozen hours a year. But, you know, it's on that case-by-case basis, where Murray, by default, can enforce bylaws on behalf of the county. So can I, on behalf of the town. So they have someone that can do it. But it's nice to have someone, you know, a peace officer in certain instances, when you need something done under enforcement. What I put, Counselor Drew, is if you go to Section 9, the peace officer shall be requested by Carston County as needed. Giving reasonable notice to the town of Carston, Section 10, the town of Carston maintains a right and its discretion to refuse service to Carston County if the peace officer is needed within the town of Carston. So we can just say, sorry, we can't, we've got, we're doing school zones tomorrow morning, we can't have them out on highway, in Mountain, you do in speed. You know, that, that wouldn't work. So we, we have discretion.
Counselor Brown, then, we, Counselor Self, first.
With respect to item number four, if there are expenses involved with that, they'll be done by the county?
So the intent is, just on a regular day, the feeding, cleaning, is that covering, the $15 is covering that?
Right. But if there's anything beyond that-
Yeah.
Like medical, medical expenses.
Probably, yeah, the euthanizing fee or something like that. We could maybe articulate that a little better, too.
That needs to be called in.
Yeah, good feedback. So let me make a note here, quick.
Counselor Brown?
Actually, I was on that as well, because I know that at the Agro Dome, we've had a horse that got taken away and kept up there, and the town was having to. So if, in fact, the county takes a horse, it goes up to the Agro Dome, are we now, will that be enough to pay the Agro Dome?
So maybe I'll have something about kind of unconventional awarding costs.
Just to cover it.
I wasn't anticipating horses, to be honest, my thought about this.
But it's happened.
But it could be.
But it's happened. It has happened. And the other thing was, as soon as town, the residents are going to look at this, they're going to say, well, our bylaw officer, isn't he busy enough on Main Street? Really? He's got time to be going elsewhere in the county? They're going to struggle with that, as I do a little bit. I just feel like, really? He's got, he's got time to be anywhere else but Main Street, doing the other things? So, I mean, I understand, I like eight, and I like nine, and I like saying that the town of Carston gets first dibs on it, essentially, and we can say yea or nay whether or not. But I think that is-
So you're not obligated to agree to this at all? Let me point that out, too.
Yep.
Counselor Bangman?
Jeff, as you are aware, that I have had phone calls asking why our peace officer is in different areas of the community, surrounding community. And it's in, in response to probably number seven, you know, and they've been requested by the county also. I think this is a good thing for the county, for the town. Our peace officer has dealings with county residents, where he has to go into the county and deal with them. And this is part of our municipal agreement between the two governments. And I, I think this is hooked on to that agreement very well. As a statute, we're willing to work with the county also.
One thing I'll just mention, I know you mentioned a couple of people saying they saw the peace officer here or there and didn't. So there was some confusion there, too.
Okay.
Counselor Drew?
So when this situation arises, and Brad goes out and does something, how does he get, does he get time and a half for this? Does he get straight time? Oh, sorry. Just curious as to how, how he gets reimbursed?
Sure. You bring, no, he, he's simply paid by the town. The fee from the county comes to the town.
Oh, no, but I'm saying, are we paying him a rate of one and a half times when he's going out and doing something else as contract?
Yeah, my anticipation is he's doing this on behalf of the county during his regular work hours.
Okay.
Now, but you bring an excellent point, that what if there's an emergent call-out where, under our association agreement, I'm not paying him at straight time? So I think that's an excellent point to make, that if there's something emergent or after hours, that the applicable rate times two would apply or something, right?
The county would have that.
So if we have to pay him time and a half, they're going to actually pay us three times.
Yeah. I had the same kind of question.
Yeah, good, good.
Because I wondered if it was of duty time, what does it look like? He will go and assist, but which cost?
Yeah, good.
I'm not saying that, I don't want to pay him. I just want to make sure that we have that covered with the county.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
If he's working time and a half, it's on their, yeah.
Does the county not have a bylaw enforcement officer?
No. Say, they don't have one for at least the past three years.
Yes, they didn't want to replace after Mr. Quentin was there. They didn't want to replace that position.
Yeah, no, that did not replace that. Okay, so-
So just, Mayor, if, just a couple of things I wanted to point out that I was concerned about. One of the things, it's Section 6, people will complain about enforcement, as you all know. And so I wanted to be clear that if there's a complaint about our peace officer, now or in the future, whoever that is, that at no time the county is in a disciplinary reprimand role with a peace officer. I'll meet with the CIO of the county, we'll talk about it. But at the end of the day, it's my employee, and I'll deal with that. I don't want it mixed up between, you know, the county wanting to reprimand for certain conduct, but it has to come through me. So we talked about, 11 just talks about how, this one came up because this happens, where the RCMP may call Brad and say, hey, could you come out here and assist us in this? But it's in the county. So Brad said, I just feel more comfortable if I get that call. And I'm calling the county and saying, hey, before I send you a bill for something, you had no idea existed. I'm on my way. Are you okay with that? Yes, great. And then he can go and assist. So just to keep them informed. Number 13 is fines generated through enforcement is forwarded to the municipality jurisdiction. This is actually a Solicitor General piece. So we can't go out and generate fine revenue in the county. That does go to the county. Given the nature of- Given the nature of what they've asked so far, I don't think they're going to see much fine revenue from it. They're not really asking them to do that. But we put that in there and, and then we just, I put this fairly generally that it'll be reviewed, but each of us can terminate by notice at any time. One thing, Counsel, this is an aside, Counselor Bang Bang alluded to this. If we look at doing this, this may be a segue to future conversation about maybe a larger or more regional peace officer enforcement. If we want to go down that road, I don't know that we do. But maybe we have a Carstens County enforcement and it contains a couple of peace officers. And this might be kind of that first step in having some of that shared service discussion down the road. I don't know, there may be no appetite on either side, but it could be a segue into that. So good feedback. If there's any more, please give that to me. I guess for today, if I have some indication, there's some concern about it, there's some support. If I have some indication from counsel, whether this is something that there's an appetite for, I can simply let Murray know, you know, we're going to tidy up an agreement and then I'll get it approved later. But at least we know we can work towards it.
Okay, Counselor Bang, Counselor St.
One of the things I'm a little bit concerned about is, in the past, that that's history, the peace officer that was in the county, there was a, there was a lot of confrontation. And I don't want Brad, you know, going into a kind of a ball of towels situation. Because I know that the former peace officer did have a lot of issues over time. And so I'm just a little concerned about that. I like the idea that he can assist, but I don't want him having people in the county in his face because he's trying to help out and assist the RCMP in a situation, right? Because that happened a lot, that's why they don't have a peace officer out there anymore. So that's just something that we need to bear. Strong personalities can create problems.
But that's what he'd be getting paid to do, right? He's got to take care of that kind of stuff. So whether it's in your face or not, that's what he's going to pay to do.
Counselor St.
As long as he has his little camera going.
Counselor Bang, Counselor St. is right. Go ahead.
I agree in principle with this.
Okay.
I would suggest that we have the administration.
Tidy up?
Tidy up this agreement and.
So you would be in support of it?
Forward it to the CAO of the county.
Maybe we need to approve it first. Yes?
Well, and I just think if we have an agreement like this with county, that it's showing the county that we want to.
Some goodwill.
Yeah.
Counselor Court?
I agree with that.
Counselor Brown, I know you have some reservation, but it's okay. I am pleased that you can voice that reservation. Thank you for doing so.
I was just thinking, one other piece that I'll make sure we do is I'll have Brad report monthly on his peace officer report, how many hours are down in county. So we have kind of a field as we go along, we can kind of track this and make sure it doesn't go, you know, further than counselors are comfortable with.
Counselor Drew?
It'd be nice to hear about what incidents he's dealing with.
The nature of the incidents.
The nature of what's going on out there, just so that we can kind of have an idea.
Because Counselor Brown, to your point, you get a citizen saying, man, I saw your peace officer out in the county. How does he have time to do that? And you say, well, he did 45 minutes last month in the county, right? Like, you'd have the numbers.
That's my point, though.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't know what that number is.
Right.
If that number is, he was out there for an hour this last night. Well, good. Whereas.
Right. Or if it was 40 hours last month, that might be a little excessive.
Exactly. That's my concern, Counselor Bang Bang.
I think we've got to remember that Brad is a qualified level-one peace officer. And he's aware of all the bylaws and policies that are in place in the town, and I'm sure he'll make himself very much aware of what's happening in the county. So there'll be a lot less citizen review of his work in the county.
Okay.
Could I request a motion, again, not to order, but to direct administration to take the feedback and enter into negotiations with the county?
That, well.
I'll make that motion.
We needed, yeah, so. Okay, so the motion is, the motion is to.
Direct.
Direct administration to.
Tidy up.
Tidy up, your words.
And enter into negotiation.
And to enter into negotiation.
Okay, I lost my minute, guys, so I'm scrambling to write down here. So yes, I'll do that and I'll get you to vote on it.
So we need to vote. Questions? Any more questions? No? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We did well. 7C, the unveiling of the new Senate. Counselor Court, first of all, I want to compliment you for all the work you have done to bring this project to light.
Thank you.
The feedback on the street is so positive, it's wonderful. And it only has been put together in the past.
Wow.
And the feedback is already very positive. So thank you so much. It has been a year and a half of work.
Well, it's not work if you enjoy doing it, so.
How good it was a year and a half when you came to council, presented the idea, we were all for it. And to see how you worked to not only see the project through, but to see the funding through. And that is excellent. So kudos to you.
So great support with Alex Natauny. Did a lot of work on that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm also in agreement with you and compliment Counselor Court. But I also would like to add that the wall of, the wall of memorabilia, or whatever, has been your project and is very, very good.
I'm not doing it for any kind of personal recognition.
I know, but it's worth mentioning because it takes, it takes someone who thinks those things through.
That's good.
Anybody on this side?
Yeah, I was just going to say, as a question, do you have any idea when the Senate is going to be put back up, are going to be put up in the cemetery yet?
I've talked, well, maybe Jeff can ask that better than I can. When they've got time, they just need to pour a pad up there.
Okay.
The town's going to do that. I would hope it's before November 11.
Yeah. I talked to Bart today about it. In fact, I went out after everything was done and all the people were gone, I went out, had a look, and Bart came out. And he said, as soon as they can get the paving done, a fifth sidewalk curb, all that tidied up, they've got the spot. They got it between two trees up there, they've got it all located and marked out, so they'll go pour the pad as soon as that's done.
And the other thing, too, is kudos to Kami for assisting you with all this, saying, she's really good at driving courses as well.
Alexis, Alexis turned up and that worked.
All right. Thank you so much for all those accolades. Let's go back to the question.
My, I guess what I want from counsel is, what do we want to do? Do you want some kind of just an opening ceremony? I don't think, I don't think you would even put something over and unveil it, I'm not sure that's the thing to do.
Well, normally when you have an official monument, that is a public monument, it is normally veiled and unveiled. This is why they call it the unveiling, right? So it does not have to be done that way. I would think that the one who would be the best to help you with that would be the Legion. So maybe Counselor Court, if we could task you with that and try to figure out a date that would be more appropriate than November 11?
We had talked last week about it, first Tuesday in October when we were back from AMA. I could, we went over to talk to Cincy today, she wasn't home, she's the president of the Legion. So I'll try and get a hold of her and see what they're thinking as far as that goes.
Well, we live it with you, for you to report whenever you can.
I'll try and find out before I go around here and maybe touch on that.
Maybe, yeah, when we go to AMA, you could have the answer then. Okay?
Ideally, we would wait till November 11. That's the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I, but we know what the weather's like in this territory. Two years ago it was 22 degrees and last year it was minus 22 degrees, so.
Yeah, so that is always a little bit of an issue.
I'll check in the.
All right.
Well, we will.
Welcome to our panel meeting.
Real quick, just procedurally, Shem just went to get some food because after that, when the public hearings start, you're probably glued in your seats for an hour and a half or so. So we thought maybe we could eat a little bit early and then our delegations and everything will be here soon and then we can commence with the public hearings. So as soon as he's back, you may want to recess for that.
Good idea.
All right. We have some financials that are there for your information. I ask a question of Jeff, how are we doing with the tax receivables? As you know, times have changed in the past six, seven years, and tax receivables have been slightly higher than what they used to be. The good news is that last week, we collected a fair amount of very, very past due taxes. And so Jill is extremely diligent and looking at that very item. As you know, no matter which way it goes, we become a little bit of the financier for the government when it comes to that because education tax and old age facilities requisitions have to be paid upfront, that you have the tax money.
Wouldn't give us any grace period, though?
No. Therefore, it's money that we could put to reduce, it is just not there.
I think, Counselor Mayor, what's helped us a lot is the prepayment and the.
And there is another thing that we do with people who find themselves in a difficult If they have solid ground, we work with them and create a payment plan for them. And we try to assist as much as we can. It's enough stress to collect the taxes. All right. Any other questions regarding this item? No? Okay.
I have one about the swimming pool. And it's related to the swimming pool. And where are they at with the progression now? Pool shut down, now there's going to be another phase of construction?
No way.
Thankfully, we're done. Any more work there?
Please, we have been completed.
Yeah, yeah, everything's done. So they're just draining it, getting ready to winterize, fill it back up with water and drain it. Yeah, and then going to start making ice. But yeah, pool, I mean, there's a few little things, Counselor, you know, there's a little cosmetic stuff here and a heat vent there and a few, but no, by and large, it's.
Nothing major now. I'm so happy to hear that.
The budget's appreciative of that, too.
How did we fare on the budget of this?
On the capital?
Yeah.
Capital, we were good. We, I need to look at it really recently, we had a bit of a larger invoice on the irrigation. I just haven't seen how that plays into the whole thing, but I wasn't at any point of concern about the capital budget on the year.
All right, we're good on this one. Committee reports. Any questions of Jeff regarding his report?
I didn't get you one, so.
Exactly.
You may have that question.
That's what I was wondering. It's a good one.
That'd be a fair question.
So that falls under the true confessions.
Yeah, sorry. I thought I took it off the agenda, actually.
I got a question to Jeff. Did you get my emails?
Yes, all those attachments.
Yeah, all the attachments, yeah.
Yeah. So they didn't get on this one.
Right.
I got them Friday night, but they'll be on the next one.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
There were very few reports because we're not totally fully in session, but I would expect next month to be definitely a regular submission of reports.
I would like to make some conversation, discussion, or a report on one item on my.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I attended the Southwest Regional Alliance meeting and they brought up a discussion on the concept of a plant protein alliance of Alberta. And the plant protein is an alternative way to provide protein. And we live in an area of livestock production in a very big way. And this kind of hit the fan a little bit at the meeting and soon as I, when I, when I saw this and I listened to what the proposal was, I thought, whoa. And one of the fellows from the MD of Pincher the Reef, he said, you mean sort of like the veggie burgers that they're making in that little restaurant? He said, you're pushing that? And he said, well, yeah, it's kind of like that. And he said, well, I'm not in favor of it. So there was a very healthy discussion because there were concerns that it could turn out into a replacement of beef and chicken and, you know, all these producers are really concerned because of what's going on right now in the States. There's already a reduction in possibility of shipping out and stuff, right? So anyways, so that was an interesting part of the conversation. So they tabled it for the time being to get more information.
Counselor, can we carry on with this discussion? We have 12 minutes to our delegation.